Madam Clerk, are we good to go?
Yep, we're good now, thank you.
No, no, thank you very much. Welcome, Council, members of the public, those who are watching us.
Yep, we're good now, thank you.
No, no, thank you very much.
Sounds like there's an echo behind me. So anyhow, could we please all rise and sing in Old Canada and remain standing for a moment of silent reflection, please? Thank you. Thank you, please be seated. Thank you, Council. For the town of New Tecomseh, we acknowledge that we are on the treaty lands and traditional territory of the Nishinawabees peoples, specifically the Ojibwe, Chipewa, Ottawa, and Potawatomi peoples, collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. This land is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. New Tecomseh is covered by the Lake Simcoe-Narrowsaga Treaty Number Eighteen, signed on October seventeenth, eighteen eighteen. For the Chipewa Nation, we acknowledge that we are all treaty people and accept our responsibility to honor all our relations and move forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect. Thank you, Council. So I'm going to go to awards and recognitions, and as your hands pop up on the screen, I'll acknowledge. Um, Councillor Masters, please, go ahead. Just turn your mute button off, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Worship, and um, hello to everybody there and our audience out there. Um, I'd just like to do a blood donors clinic announcement. Tottenham Blood Donors Clinic, one thirty-nine Queen Street North, um, is Saturday, the September the twentieth, uh, from nine o'clock till one P M. And Allison Memorial Arena at forty-nine Nelson Street West, Alliston, Thursday, September the twenty-fifth. And also, uh, that runs from one P M to seven P M. Thank you, Worship.
Oh, thank you, Councillor Masters. Councillor Bis, please.
I got it, yeah. Uh, thank you, Worship. So just, uh, I just want to let Council know and everyone out there that at sunset, on Saturday, August sixteenth, the Treetops Planning Committee held their second annual Treetops Movie Night in the Park. Hundreds of kids, friends, and family sat on their lawn and watched Disney's Moana Two. Uh, before the movie started, an Ottawa Saga O P P spoke to the audience to address the use of electric scooters, e-bikes, and child safety. After speaking, the officers stayed and stayed to interact with the kids and the parents and everyone that was around. So I'd like to thank O P P Constable Buckner, O P P Constable Matheson, and O P P Constable Clark. I'd also like to extend special thanks to the community leaders who volunteered their time to organize the movie night. Um, include among them is, of course, is Mrs. Ramena Silverelli and Mrs. Jessica Maderos, your Worship. Um, I think I'll also take, if you don't mind, I'll take the opportunity to give my A M O update.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario's annual conference was held from Sunday, August seventeenth, to Wednesday, August twentieth, in Ottawa this year. Um, like many of us, it was a privilege for me to attend the conference along with you, your Worship, and several other councillors. We also were fortunate to have General Manager Bruce Hoppy attend and provide his expertise when preparing for and attending the meetings. Uh, in addition to the daily workshops, plenary program, concurrent sessions, and trade show that lasted, or sorry, that started at seven thirty A M and lasted until six P M, the following notable events and meetings took place. I noted that Global Mail columnist and CBC panelist Andrew Coyne delivered this year's A M O keynote address. We had speeches from Premier Doug Ford, N D P Opposition Leader Merritt Stiles, Liberal Leader Bonnie Crumbie, and Green Party Leader Mike Schreiner. A M O launched its first Indigenous Relations Action Plan, which included a smudging and performance by the Spirit Wolf Singers. Uh, the mayor, councillors, and G M Hoppy met with M P P Brian Soderson. I had the opportunity to meet with Enbridge Gas Municipal Affairs Advisor Desiree Swans to discuss natural gas expansion to rural residents and farmers. I met with University of Toronto Professional Development Coordinators Anissa Dijon Mirage and Ayesha Usman to discuss internship possibilities and opportunities for U of T students in New Tecomseh. And finally, of note, I met with Calling Wood Councillor Christopher Baines to discuss the two thousand and twenty-six N B C A budget and the status of the Calling Wood Water Treatment Plant, your Worship.
No, well done. Thank you, Councillor Bis, very detailed, and it's greatly appreciated, and it was a pleasure to be down there with you. Um, I'm going to move on to Councillor Rappan, please.
Thank you very much. Um, just like Councillor Bis, I just wanted to talk about a couple of the things that happened at A M O that I was fortunate enough to attend last week. Is that okay to do that now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so, uh, fortunately for me, I was able to track down the Health Minister Sylvia Jones, and I had a good talk with her for a few minutes. And, uh, I'm excited about a few things that we talked about, which will hopefully, uh, be shared in the future, just not at present. And, um, the other thing, uh, that I had a chance, I went to a presentation on, uh, a program that's been released this past year, um, by the provincial government. It's called Ontario CORPS. Uh, and Ontario CORPS is, um, a volunteer program where you can sign up for it, and you'll be respons- um, you'll have opportunities to, um, be part of emergency responses. So something, uh, out of the blue happens, well, we can talk about like the, the winter storm in Gravenhurst and the area up there, and how there needed to be trees cleared, and there was all so many different aspects of it. And so what the provincial government's doing is creating a volunteer task force that can come in and help out with that. And the neat thing is, it's sixteen years and up. So this is an opportunity even for some of our high school students to get their forty hours. Um, at least just with the training, they can get some of their hours. I'm not, I'm not hopeful that they have emergencies, they have to attend to get their forty hours on. I don't want any emergencies to happen, to be quite honest, but, but it does give you a chance to have valuable volunteer hours that'll, you know, help the world, help Ontario, help municipalities. So that's Ontario CORPS, C O R P S. And you can find it online, or I can attach a link at some point somewhere. But, uh, think, really think you should check it out. And it was great to see the councillors, the mayor, and, uh, and, uh, G M Hoppy as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councillor Rappan. If I'm not mistaken, I think they said they already have three thousand plus members. Yeah, so it's growing, so it's a resource that we all can use. Uh, Councillor Jacks, please.
Thank you, uh, your Worship. And on this past Friday night, I had the pleasure of attending a gathering and celebration for two members of our New Tecomseh community. Uh, longtime residents Wayne and Ann Caldwell were honored and celebrated at the Tottenham Legion as they are retiring and relocating to the East Coast. Um, they were, I was able to, on behalf of council and the town of New Tecomseh, present them with, uh, certificates to honor thirty years, each respectively, uh, for their, uh, work and volunteerism within the community. Wayne, uh, was most recently the, uh, president of the CRIC Committee, the Community Recreation and Improvement Committee. And, uh, he stepped down from that role, so it was wonderful to be able to celebrate two great people who have done so much. And it was officially announced there as well, or I guess maybe unofficially, but confirmed and announced there to the community that, um, somebody I may or may not know, Alison Jacks, is stepping into the president of the CRIC Committee now, uh, and taking over as chair on that board. So, uh, great committee, great people, and it was an honor to be there on behalf of council and the town to honor them.
Oh, thank you very much, Councillor Jacks. I know your family's been, uh, involved with the CRIC Committee for, I'm not gonna say years, decades. So I'll just leave it at that. Is there anything else from members of council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'm, thank you, council. Thank you for all your persuasion in our community. I know the community greatly appreciates. So I'm going to move into the confirmation of agenda. So I'm going to go to the clerk to identify any items to add or delete to the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your Worship. As per the town's petition policy, item C three was added to the agenda as an addenda item. Um, just petition to council, re six-two-eight-six-fourteenth line, New Tecomseh. And additionally, we received a request from Deputy Mayor McClellan to add an item to the agenda regarding reconsideration of item R dash three on the council agenda of July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Speeding mitigation measures for put in place. This item requires a unanimous vote to be added to the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I have a motion be resolved that the agenda for the council meeting held in August twenty-fifth, two zero two five be confirmed as agenda. Sorry, as amended. I'm just gonna go around the screen as I see you. Councillor Bis, would you move that? Thank you. Councillor Rappan, would you second that? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you, council. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Any members of council have a pecuniary interest, please? Thank you. So we're going to move on to the adoption of council minutes. We have a motion be resolved of the minutes from the council meeting, the council closed meeting dated July twenty-eighth, two zero two five be adopted. Uh, Deputy Mayor, did you want to move that, or did you want to make a comment? Sorry.
I was just looking for quick clarification if that, um, report I was requesting come back on the agenda, if we're doing a separate vote for that, or if that was supposed to be the vote, I was just unclear, that's all.
Sure, no worries. I'm going to go to the clerk to, uh, to clarify, please. Oh, you're on mute, Madam Clerk.
Sorry about that. Just clarification if that was a unanimous vote to, uh, adopt the agenda as amended.
Well, then what I'll do is I'll put the vote out there. Um, sorry, my apologies. So I know it's the first time we've done that. So we have the agenda, and then we have a request from the deputy mayor, um, for that other motion or issue to come forward. So we require, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, you have the decision of council, all those in favor of adding the deputy mayors? It has to be unanimous. That's not carried. So thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I'll just keep going then. I'll go to the adoption of council minutes. Be resolved the minutes for the council meeting, the council closed meeting dated July twenty-eight, two zero two five be adopted. I'll go to Councillor Gabbard, Councillor Masters, any comments or questions, please?
Uh, your Worship, I don't think I can, uh, uh, certify that I wasn't here.
No, that's fine. I'll go to Councillor Jacks. Would you do that, please? Thank you, all those in favor. Thank you. So now I'm going to go to the clerk to identify items for separate discussion, the reason thereof. Please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your Worship. Um, item C dash three, petition to council, re six-two-eight-six-fourteenth line, New Tecomseh, as there is a deputation.
Thank you. And there's nothing else, Madam Clerk?
Nothing else for us to call, thank you.
Okay, council, identify items for separate discussion, please, members of council. I'm not seeing any, thank you. So I'm going to go back to the clerk to summarize all items identified for separate discussion, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your Worship. Uh, just item C dash three, deputation to council, or petition to council, re six-two-eight-six-fourteenth line, New Tecomseh, as there is a deputation.
Thank you. So we have a motion be resolved that I M C W one to C W five from the committee of the whole meeting report dated July twenty-eighth, two zero two five, including additional information memorandums, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion be approved, and the recommendations therein be adopted. And further, communication items and any other item listed on the council meeting agenda dated August twenty-fifth, two zero two five, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion received and/or adopted. So I would then go to, uh, Councillor Masters, would you move that? Councillor Foster, would you second that, please? Thank you, all those in favor. That's carried, thank you. Deputations requiring statutory public meetings, we do not have any. Deputations related to new matters, we do not have any. So, uh, Madam Clerk, with your permission, I'm going to go to C three, please. Would that be acceptable at this point?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Weston, I believe you're on the screen. If you'd like to turn on your camera and your microphone, please, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, councillors, and city staff. Thank you very much for, uh, accepting the deputation to speak to you at this meeting. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, we had the pleasure to meet before. We had the honor of you coming to a Sugar Tones meeting. Sugar Tones is a group that I started, um, in two thousand and thirteen, and you came to celebrate our tenth anniversary. It was a great honor. Thank you for that. I want to also thank our Ward Four councillor, specifically Alan Masters, for making yourself available on the phone, texts, emails, and, uh, face-to-face meeting to discuss this proposed development. Thank you very much for that. And also a special thank you to city staff in the planning department and the clerk's office to have clarified details of this proposal. I appreciate that very much. Um, I know, uh, council is well acquainted with the public concerns expressed at public meetings, correspondence, and also in the petition. The petition is appealing to council to withhold your approval of the planned apartment building and associated high-density residential designation. And I'm only going to focus on the, uh, largest concerns that neighbors have expressed, and I was the one who organized this petition. I walk in the community a lot, that is my way to stay fit, and neighbors talk to me, and I listen. And, uh, the initial notice of the high-density red designation came as a shock to us. The plan just before, just a month before, had shown a low-density extension of the current bungalow community we have here in Briar Hill. And, uh, this high-density designation also went against the information we had when we bought our homes here. And many of my neighbors, um, I'm using their words, felt betrayed. Many have been quite vocal in saying, we don't want this. And, um, I need to also say that we are proud of our Briar Hill community. We are very proud of it. We are attracted to, uh, live here. We are attracted by the builders' appealing variety of styles of bungalow homes with ample landscaping around them. And now, the proposed addition of a three-story apartment building on the subject property would more than double the density on that relatively small plot of land. And it went from sixteen, um, dwellings to over four, to forty, actually. So that's more than a doubling. The plot of land is not large, one point six acres, and a little bit. And this caused significant concern for us with aggravation of traffic flow, issues with lack of off-street guest parking, lack of plans for sidewalks, and further strain on the resources for servicing our common elements. And those concerns have been communicated, both in correspondence and public meetings. Another significant issue with the proposed plan is the proposed location of the three-story apartment building at the bottom of the hill and at the very frontage of the southern entrance to Briar Hill. It will greatly close down the perception of space that we otherwise appreciate so much here in this community. And neighbors closest to this proposed development will, instead of looking at Narrowsaga Conservation Area, and I'm using their words, will instead be looking at a three-story wall stretching across most of the property. The same goes for other Briar Hill residents. As they exit the community, they will see a large wall rather than the beauty of the Narrowsaga Conservation Area. Uh, we appreciate the city's appreciation of green space and the tree policy showing that you understand the importance of green space, not only for the environment, but also for the well-being, mental well-being of its citizens. And this is, uh, also part of the major concerns I hear when I walk around our little neighborhood here. And, um, no matter how aesthetically pleasing the proposed apartment building may be, it will still encroach in a major way on open space and the ambiance of the rest of Briar Hill West that made us move in here. And many of us are also promoting the Briar Hill to friends and acquaintances to see the sales office, to come join us here. Many feel differently about that now. So in my last few minutes here, and I thank you again for this deputation, uh, I want to ask council about alternative options. Um, is there a mechanism for council to ask the builder for any alternative options before making your decision to ratify the recommendation before you? And those alternative options have been described in correspondence. It could also be other options to place the building, for example, on the west periphery instead of the southern frontage of the property. So I will hold my, my words there and see if there's any questions or comments from council. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And yes, I do oversee you at that. You do a very good job too, sir, Mr. Weston. I really appreciate it. So, you're more than welcome. Um, you asked a question about whether or not the town asked the builder to reconsider different locations or, um, different properties. I don't believe we do, but I would look to, um, uh, I'll go to the C E O if he'd like to defer it or send it to, uh, G M Hoppy. But, um, do we have an answer for that before all the comments and questions from members of council, please? Oh, thank you, C E O.
Yeah, if there are any questions, uh, that require answering, uh, the general manager Hoppy could, could be of assistance.
Thank you. Uh, General Manager, do you just, do you have a comment? If not, it's okay. Um, I don't, uh, I think I know the answer, but I'd rather, um, hear it from you, if that's okay.
Certainly, your Worship. Um, as part of any development proposal, there are lots of dialogue uh, between our planning staff and the proponent and, uh, taking into consideration a host of technical and, and other concerns that have been raised. So that is common for a lot of, uh, back and forth. Um, that has happened, that happens with every development application routinely. And, um, basically is culminating with tonight's, uh, report to recommend approval of the application.
Thank you, G M. Is there any comments or questions for members of council to the presenter, please? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I would like to thank you once again, sir, for making your presentation. Uh, the recommendation is that, uh, be resolved that the deputation of Mr. Wilson be received, and further, that the petition to council be received. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Councillor Bis, Councillor Harrison McIntyre, thank you, all those in favor. That's carried by council. Mister Wilson, thank you again for taking your time to come out and address council. We greatly appreciate it. We're always here to listen to your concerns, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing our concerns. I will sign off now. Shall I?
Yes, sir. Well, you're always welcome to stay.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll mute and turn off my radio.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to stay, sir, of course. So we're going to move into the bylaws now, Madam Clerk, if that's okay with you. So we have a motion be resolved of the following bylaws be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Two zero two five, zero seven zero, two zero two five, zero seven one, two zero two five, zero seven two, two zero seven five, zero seven three. I'd ask the deputy mayor, would you move that, please? Yeah, thank you very much. Um, who, I miss, oh, Councillor Gabbard, would you second that, please? Thank you, all those in favor. That's carried. Thank you, council. Uh, general information or announcements? Um, does any member of council have one? Um, I, I do have a quick one. Uh, Simcoe County is put, we're going to bring more information next council meeting, but, um, Simcoe County has a program now that we're helping those that are renting. Um, will pay up to a certain amount for a ten percent down payment to put them in home ownership, um, which will then free up more rental apartments, help get our younger people or people into, uh, housing, and, uh, keep the economy rolling. So please stay tuned, and we'll get you more information on that. So we have no public notices. Uh, we have a confirming bylaw be resolved, that bylaw two zero two five, zero seven four, to confirm the proceeding of council at its meeting on August twenty-fifth, two zero two five, be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Councillor Rappan, will you move that? Thank you. Councillor Jacks, would you second that? Thank you, all those in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, um, you did advise it takes a minute or two to roll from one session to the next, so could you please advise when we're ready to, uh, start the committee meeting, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, your Worship. Um, we just need a motion for adjournment, and if I'm not stopping the meeting, we'll just roll right into committee.
Oh, we can do that? Okay, no, that's fantastic. So a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty, please. I go to Councillor Masters and Councillor Harrison McIntyre, move in second, all those in favor. That's carried, thank you. So we'll just, uh, we'll roll right into that. Just, uh, just need a second here, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are we good to go?
Yes, your Worship, we're good.
Thank you. So we have the confirmation of agenda, that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on August twenty-fifth, two zero two five being confirmed as amended. Councillor Foster, would you move that? Councillor Bis, would you second that? Thank you, all those in favor. That's carried. Thank you, council. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Uh, any members of council have the disclosure of pecuniary interest, please? I'm not seeing any on the screen, thank you very much. So determination of items requiring separate discussion. I'd like to look to the clerk, please, to identify items for separate discussion and the reason thereof, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your Worship. We do not have any items for separate discussion this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go to council, identify items for separate discussion. Uh, Councillor Bis, please.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Uh, C W three two, please.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um, we did not receive any requests from members of the public for items requiring separate discussion. So Madam Clerk, may I go back to you, please, to summarize all items identified for separate discussion, please?
Thank you, your Worship. Item C W three two, two thousand and twenty-four Statement of Development Charge Reserve Funds and Credit Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So then we have a recommendation, adoption of items not requiring separate discussion, that all the items not identified for separate discussion be received, and the recommendations therein be recommended to council for adoption. I'm just going to go around the screen, please. Um, uh, so Councillor Jackson, Councillor Bis, move in second, please. That's carried. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so then we're going to go forward. Uh, Councillor Bliss, if it's okay with you, I'd like to hand the floor over to you to discuss your issue, please. C W three dash two.
Thank you, Worship. Um, through your Worship to the Treasurer. Um, first of all, this is a, I want to thank Patricia Thorne, the analyst for Financial Services, for putting this together. It's a, a good report, especially as we're moving into budget sessions, um, budget consideration in the fall. Um, one of the things I just want to highlight before I get into my question, your Worship, is the fact that I get into my question, your worship, is the fact that um there's a bit of misinformation out there in the world that's, that makes a lot of people think that uh the town of New Tecumseh and other towns, and other towns and townships are hoarding DC funds. And if you take a look at this, this uh, this report in, is in and of itself, it just basically um explores the fact that uh, and I'll tell, you know, under the key findings on page one, the town's development charges DC wastewater reserve remains on a, in a significant deficit of twenty-five point eight million dollars. So people, i- if they don't, if they hear kind of the rhetoric of, you know, the, some of the larger cities like Toronto have been stackpiling millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars worth of d- development charges, uh, this is not the case for New Tecumseh. New Tecumseh uses our money, uses the development, development charges, um, usually after um significant uh infrastructure has been, has been built. So through worship to the treasurer, on page three, I'll just read out, because I don't think people at home have this, but the deficit balances in water and waste to our DC reserves are due to a timing mismatch between when the DCs are collected and when the related infrastructure was built. As infrastructure of this nature was built to accommodate growth, that has not fully occurred. The DCs that help pay for these projects are collected as development progressives. The town will issue debentures for larger projects to minimize the cumulative effect im- sorry, impact of limited DC collections. However, further cash flow measures may need to be explored as the newly implemented Bill seventeen Protect on Terror by Building Faster and Smarter Act could present cash flow challenges in the future. Through worship to the, to the treasurer, could you expand on this and clarify what's meant by further cash flow measures in order to um a- address Bill seventeen?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Bess. It's a very good question. So I would go to Director Galant, if you're comfortable, please?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Through you to Counselor Bess. In general, what that means is um largely due to the timing of when development charges would be received, we would need some interim funding to help fund projects until, until development charges are paid. Um, one of the first things we look for is, is debentures and the possibility of raising cash through debt financing. Um, we also do look at alternate arrangements. For example, having developers um pay earlier in the process than they would otherwise normally do.
Um, Counselor Bess, did you have a follow-up with that uh question, please?
Thank you, worship. Just supplementary, through you to, to Director Galant, uh, when you're talking about um making the um, obviously getting debentures to cover the shortfall, um, with those debentures until DCs are collected, would they be, would they uh be paid through operating expenses or through capital expenses? Operating expenses, of course, would impact our taxation, correct?
Through your worship to Counselor Bess, uh, it, it would be an operating expense. However, we would fund the principal and the interest by development charges.
So just so I clear, uh, your worship, your worship to, to Director Galant, but initially, if we don't have, if we're in a deficit situation, we don't have development charges and we debenture, until the, the development charges are collected, will the taxpayer have to pay for the uh, for at least the interest portion?
Um, through your worship to Counselor Bess, they, so what happens is if a, if the reserves are in a deficit, it means that we're required to finance from another source, to your point. Typically, that would be one of our other reserves that we just do interfinancing between the reserves. We try to avoid impacting the taxpayer, but there is potential to hit the reserves that ultimately hit the taxpayer temporarily.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Director Galant, before I go to Counselor Foster, but if we have to incur interest on those debentures, we get to bill that back to developers. Is that correct?
We do bill it back through development charges, correct.
Okay, thank you, Director. Counselor Foster, please?
Thank you, Mayor Norcross. Just a couple of quick points. The thirty-six point three million that we have in DC credits, uh, it's a couple of part question. How, how many developers is that spread across? And in their uh DC credit agreement, is there a specific rate at which they can take advantage of those DC credits? And I guess my point is, is that if the economy changed and they all of a sudden decided to uh build a number of houses, could they cash in all thirty-six point three million dollars instantaneously? Or or is there some form of contract or agreement that spreads it out over a specified period of time?
Thank you, Director.
Uh, through your worship to Counselor Foster. Um, I don't have the exact number of developers in front of me. Uh, if I recall correctly,
I don't say it was a big one. I just was curious roughly, three or four?
Um, I'm gonna say it's closer to eight or ten. Um, not a large number. Um, in response to the second part of your question, um, let me just think about that. So the development agreements stipulate at a high level that the developers will front-end infrastructure for us. Um, that in itself is enough incentive for them to build in a timely manner, because as soon as they get that infrastructure built, they're eligible to start reclaiming those DC credits. So what happens is they offset DCs that are payable typically at the time of building permit, they'll offset the credits at that time. So that's where their incentive is to, to build as quick as possible. Aside from that, there's no set timeline as to when they have to build.
Uh, supplementary, right?
Yeah, please go ahead, Counselor.
I wasn't so can, I wasn't, I was more coming at the perspective of, I understand the DC credits and the thirty-six point three million dollars, but at the end of the day, if they all built those houses and they took out, because the DCs are payable at the building permit stage. So if all of a sudden, just the downstream effects of a fairly rapid economic turnaround, uh, quick building by a lot of these developers and the instant adding on to all these houses puts a drain on the need for services. Hence, that would, that would um, that thirty-six point three million dollars we would actually need to have to service all the things that come with hundreds or thousands of new people. So my point was just, is that can they take it all at one time, or does it have to be spread out over five or six years? Because that would have a downstream effect to Counselor Bess's point of, of uh a fairly significant drain on uh, on debentures, which ultimately incurs additional costs, which will inevitably hit the taxpayer as hard as we try.
Thank you. Director, do you have a comment or? No, that's fine.
So then, could I, sorry, Mayor Norcross. So the answer to the cashing in of DCs, did I hear that correctly? They could all come at one time, theoretically.
Theoretically, yes, they could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Any other comments or questions in regard to the report? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So it's CW three. Recommendation that report number FIN two zero two five dash one five be received. And for that the audited consolidated statements for the corporation of the town of Tecumseh for the year ended December thirty-one, two zero two four, is ordered by BEO Canada LLP Charter Council be approved. And for the mayor-in-chief administrative officer, be authorized on the consolidated statement of financials. And that's not the one we're on, because we're on CW three two, Statement of Development Charge Reserve Funds. Thank you. Sorry, I'm learning this as I go along. Sorry, I got papers over here. So we have a recommendation, report number FIN two zero two five dash one six be received. And for the statements for running attachments one and two, report number FIN two zero two five dash one six be published on the town's website in accordance with Development Charges Act one nine nine seven requirements. Counselor Foster, would you move that? And Counselor Bess, would you second that? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you, council. That's carried. One second here. So we don't have any public knowledge uh notices for tonight. So we do have an adjournment, a recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting on August twenty fifth, two zero two five adjourned at six forty-two PM. Deputy Mayor, would you move that, please? Counselor, yeah, yes, thank you. Counselor Gabbard, would you second that, please? Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much, council. Enjoy the rest of your summer for the week that's left.